We heard from neighbors.
And we have William and Bonnie Key, 1601 Second Street.
Correct.
It went out with all these others.
How is the section still open? The members of the public elect to go up. So those two questions that the first member of the audience spoke about about if the applicant can maybe address those two points.
I have one comment. You send me a, send us a notice that you sent out supposedly to us the first time, send it the second time. Just so I can read it.
The public hearing notice.
Send you one now after me? You need just a second one to see if you get it?
Yeah.
Okay.
The two questions that I noted, correct me if I'm not on it. Parking and what kind of patients?
Parking congestion and traffic and then the type of patients.
And I would just like to correct that this isn't a rezon. It would allow another use conditionally within that zone. It does not change the zone itself.
What's the difference?
Well, to, the zone is R1 low density residential. To change it would be to go to an R2 medium density residential or R3 high density residential which supports apartments. This doesn't change the zone. There's a table that has a list of the different uses that are permitted in the zone. And it has lists, a list of uses that are conditionally permitted, which means that there may be some sort of impact. And the planning commission could put conditions on it to minimize that impact.
So what's the purpose of zoning if you want to do something in there that doesn't mean the zone? You just give it in a conditional zone? Why you having something rolling?
We can't get them on the recorder, I'm sorry. Need to ask your questions to the podium.
Well, to the first question about parking, I've gone by there several times. And to me, it looked like on Peach, the home that's right on the corner of Second and Peach. I haven't seen much activity there. What some of the areas are actually boarded up. I haven't seen any cars in that, on Peach, like going to the north. So I thought that staff could walk from either there or across the street. And there's some dirt area off of the road. That may not be the best. And I'd also thought about, you know, the market has quite a bit of space there for parking. And I thought we could ask for a privilege to park at the market. We could even pay them some kind of stipend for parking at the market. It doesn't look, the area doesn't look too busy at the market. And it would be good for our staff to walk to the plane on a daily basis. We're not that far. Regarding open to everyone, yes. Our offices are open. Any patients we take, when I say anything from nothing to something. We take patients with no insurance. And we have contracts with every insurance company. Blue Cross, Blue Shield, All Care, Medicare, Medi-Cal, and Aetna, et cetera. We are the largest primary care group in the valley between Visalia, making up the Cool Medical Group. So Cool has a lot of specialists. We have 65 providers, including doctors, PAs, nurse practitioners. Our organization has about 260 employees. We've been in business about 22 years. But we mostly got small, little clinics in little areas. So it's open to everyone and we take every kind of insurance. Doctor Metaphen enjoy some of the younger folks, some of the older folks. He plans to use some prenatal care and would throw every down in the set. As far as other neighbors coming in, this home is kind of especially suited for neighbors such as ours. It has quite a few rooms. It's very well made. Has wheelchair accessible ramps already. Has a nice little walking area around the back, nice beautiful little garden. Of course, the dinner night people are built a real nice little facility and they keep it very clean. There also is some parking at the side. There's a double car garage. And that driveway is kind of long too. Probably hit four cars in there in that driveway if you have to. But I would think that two would be of a park up near the, up near the garage. And it wouldn't even be close to the street there because it's up a little way to set off the street. And we did go by the key's home, you know, the very nice home. One of the well, best well kept homes over there. Brick, pretty flowers, all that. I'd love to get it brought to the front door, but you weren't there that day. And so I apologize. We did need to go back and talk to you about this because I know that it would affect you. We did come though, and we did talk to the people across the street and some of the other folks. Of course, we were, anyway, they weren't resistant to the way we talked. But maybe they talked to their own neighbor differently or something. But they were very accepting of us, of the Hispanic people in there. We see that they didn't mind and some are renters and some are owners. And we did meet quite a few of them. And we have the gentleman from the, from the home here too, who had a lot more experience in Livingston, a lot more credibility than I would have at this point too. So we would like to be good neighbors. And we think this would be, for us, we're asking your counsel. We'll take it either way. Thank you. I don't know if you have any further questions. Open your phone. I think I can address those points. More questions?
Yes. No, I don't.
Okay. I can hear you. How do we sound? So, okay. And we're closed at 7:52. We'll have a little discussion here and we'll see how it pans. And our other plans. So what are we feeling here? Thoughts? Well, start with Donna.
I think it's a good idea, but I was under the impression that all the neighbors were with it or willing to you guys to support you guys. Now, my, now that I heard one of the neighbors, I would like personally go and talk to some of the neighbors to see what they think. And I will make my decision when I speak to all the neighbors at almost, what do you say, 300 feet or, you know, so. I know you got your support, but there's a citizen here from City Livingston and, you know, so I would like to just go and talk to the rest of the neighbors in the neighborhood and see, you know, what they say.
Yeah, that was my concern too, for the neighbors from the building. If they would allow, I would be happy to cut a bit, some same with that money. So I really, yeah, I'd like to get a little more, more feedback on the neighbors around the, for the building.
Can you say really quickly that this, if we were to approve this text amendment, just in fact, that it would impact all low density residential? So this, this is a big decision. Or it could be, has a lot of implications.
That's correct. And I would just like to remind you that this would be a recommendation, yea or nay, to the city council. And then the city council would take this under review for two public hearings. Because it is an ordinance amendment, it does require two, a first reading and a second reading. And then each of these meetings, the planning commission meeting and the two city council meetings do have 10 day appeal periods as well.
I'll add a couple of points to, not to be overshadowed. No, but in all seriousness, there are a commission to what Donna said. This is a text amendment to the zoning code. So it's correct that this would apply citywide to address the question from the member of the public. The difference between a condition on, in the zoning code and changing the underlying zoning is, for the most part, you know, the same restrictions in the underlying, the underlying zoning are the same. There are certain uses that only are permitted with conditional approval from the commission. So this text amendment essentially adds this as one of the uses that may be conditionally approved under, under the zoning code. The, which brings me to my next point, which is not only will there be two hearings at the city council, but prior to the applicant actually being able to use this property, they would have to come back to the planning commission for the approval of a conditional use permit. So the, the process here is that we're amending the text of the zoning code to create the ability for them to obtain a conditional use permit. If, if the plan, if the council approves that text amendment, the applicants would come back to the planning commission with a conditional use permit application. So there'll be another public hearing and another opportunity for the commission. At that time, if they wanted to impose conditions regarding parking or traffic or safety or, it would also give the commissioners the opportunity to talk to the public about their, about those concerns. So I'm not advocating one way or the other. I just wanted to make sure that anyone is aware of the process.
Thank you for that. I have a few comments. I was sort of indifferent about this project and now, how about the project kind of, so now I'm going back and forth on it. I just have one quick question on page two of the staff report. Second to the bottom paragraph, the last sentence of paragraph, the start of the table three dash when used dash commercial zoning. The last sentence says, medical offices are currently prohibited in the R1 and other residential district. I was just curious what, I'm not sure if we can ask this now, what the history of that prohibition is? Why is it prohibited? I think I know the answer, but I, maybe not.
I do not have an answer for that.
And if we're looking at that map over there, what color is designated as R1? If, if anything.
Well, that is our, it's our general plan map, but we're the zoning map, but we'd be the lighter, the yellow, the pale yellow colors.
So R1 is all of the pale yellow color?
Correct.
So this decision does have, that's most of Livingston, or seems like a lot of Livingston there. I do like the idea of having a medical center walkable to residents. And this commission just approved having a low income housing complex near this proposed site. So that would be convenient for those family members. And I do acknowledge the concerns that were raised by the neighbors. So, what we feel? I know this is a very long process because if we do approve it and it goes extremely, it still has to come back to us for our June meeting. So it's not like it's going to go away quickly, it's going to come back. That we approve it and not, even if the city council approves it? I think so that I.
Yes, whether or not.
Even if the city council approves, it's going to come back to the planning commission?
Right, whether or not you approve tonight, it does go to the planning commission at the next meeting with your recommendation. The city council, excuse me, city council with your recommendation. And this is to amend the zoning code. So if the city council does determine that they want to amend the zoning code to allow a conditional use like this, they need to come back to you for a conditional use permit.
So it doesn't matter, I'll just prolong what the conversation is happening here. It doesn't matter what our recommendation is, it's up to the city council's discretion. And if that body approves it, it still comes back to us in June.
I, I wouldn't say it doesn't matter. I would expect, I would expect that the council gives very close attention to your recommendation. Especially with this much deliberation and input from the community. And that's, that's why this process is in place. But yes, the answer to the question is that your, this will be on the next city council agenda.
Regardless.
With a positive or a negative recommendation or a neutral condition. Neutral is the only. And then, and then pending, if the council approves the amendment, again, the applicant at that point would have to apply for the conditional use permit. And under the, and under Livingston code, conditional use permits is what we just did because of the chemistry government. That, that action was a conditional use permit application that stops at the planning commission unless it is an appeal. So it would come back in a few months if the commission, again, if the council approves the amendment, the item would come back in a few months. And at that time, the, the commission, again, like I said, could, could impose additional conditions and has to make the findings that, that are required by the code for a conditional use permit. So if, if it, if it turns out that there is not enough parking to provide for this conditional use, that's a required finding for a conditional use permit. The commission has to take that into consideration and considering the CUP.
Do we know how many spaces we need to provide a permit to that building?
You're talking about parking?
Yeah, parking spaces.
Parking in the city ladies have been very interesting to us. That's why I assume we can spread from the others. Set a planning condition, maybe we don't have that first.
Okay, for a medical and dental office, it's one parking space for each 200 square feet of gross floor area plus one additional space for each employee. But the city does have the ability to reduce parking standards if there will be people carpooling, taking a bus, walking, riding a bike to work. Parking can be reduced for those reasons.
And that low income parking in a home like that, this body approved last week, has a surplus of parking spots and it's available nearby. Where the decision is made, is can I suggest that it says item 14, office comma medical? And then it lists accommodations to include chiropractic, dental doctors. Can we insert mental health or some sort of psychological services? I think that's often forgotten in our conversations about the community health, mental health. So if a, is that sort of encompassed their doctor?
I, yeah. If that would fall in that, but we could clarify that, that's a good question.
Right, we list medical, dental, and lay-in services. We could put mental health in there.
I think that would be where the commission decides having mental health somewhere in there would be good to sort of promote that within our community. Because that's often aligned or not discussed as much as it should with our community.
So if we approve it, it will give the city, the council to actually go and talk to some of the neighbors. And if they think it's, none of the neighbors approve it, they could actually turn it down or once you approve it, that's it?
They will have two public hearings, a first reading and a second reading. And we'll send out public notices to the neighborhood. And they can either submit by email, a letter, they can drop it off, they can come into city hall and talk to us. And they can come to those public hearings and voice their concerns.
Can we make the condition of the approval to expand the notice beyond 300 feet? Or to include most or good chunk of that R1 district outside of the, the project's area?
Like up to 500 foot radius or?
Yeah, I feel like 300 may be too limited. Because the impact of traffic congestion in our body would supersede 300 feet. I think 300 feet, like, it's your houses.
Yeah, it's maybe a whole block.
I believe 500 feet would take care of the whole block.
It's a three block block.
Three block block.
It goes from J Street to the street.
Right, right. And there's only three houses at the end of the street that could not make it into the 300 foot. So 500 would easily take the circle quite a bit wider.
I think that might be helpful in terms of transparency, getting a better communication before with the community. And then my second part of my point was, I think, expanding it not just within that neighborhood area, but to other R1 neighborhoods. With the idea that medical professional offices need to set up shop there. You know what I mean?
Well, we do know this on channel two at city hall and on our website. I guess the only consideration would be how much postage do you want to pay to do, to cover the whole city or most of the city?
Question for Donna. Has the medicine medical group escaped any voice on this project? Being, is it positive or negative for them? Would they be losing clients, customers on their level to this one?
Well, actually, I had some communication with them today and this point did not come under that conversation. And they contacted me about another mask.
Are there, are there any early rumors about where Dr. Carter wants this additional shop?
Just someplace bigger.
Wasn't the medicine medical group going to make another clinic or an artist, I recall, fist room?
Right, they would like to use part of the property near campus, park, school.
So it's the same as a yellow, it's like the rest of R1, right?
No, it's blue. It's blue on that back.
Public facility use.
Yes, public facility use. Six to seven, park to, what's the other, park to, can't remember the name of the street.
They have to just write it on the street, there's houses and another set of houses, so it's, it's known differently.
Park, is it park to F?
Yes, thank you.
So we need a, we need a, two recommendations.
So another question for Donna.
Yes.
How easy or, how easy would it be for another, I guess, a doctor or some other agency to come in and say they want to open up one of these in another residential house?
So just to couple of, into that question and, but first also just to, just to note, normally there wouldn't be the 300 foot notice distribution for a text amendment, which is what this is. That's, that's the requirement that's usually attached to conditional use permits, which isn't, is actually not in front of the commission tonight. That's what would come back if the council approves the zoning amendment. So the 300 foot notice tonight was, was given, I think, just because in the future, as a courtesy, right? Because in the future, this CUP would be contemplated under this zoning text amendment. And then the question about how easy it would be in the future for other similar offices in the, in the, in R1 districts. If they would have to apply for a conditional use permit. Commission would have to make the find, the required findings in the code to approve the permit and would have the opportunity to impose any, any, any conditions at that time that it, that it approved the permit.
Can I ask one other question? We can, if the commission doesn't jack bolt in it again, I can go and I to the public. You want to go up this way, I'm sorry.
The question I have, again, if, if we have zoning and it's R1, and then if, if, if anyone can come in and start a cleaning or, or start a business or something, and all we have to do is go through the process and it conditionally approved to go into R1. So if this is approved, what's to stop it happening all over the, all over the city? So what's the purpose of residential zoning? All you have to do is go through the process and get it changed so you can move your business in.
Well, actually now, the, the planning movement is moving more towards a mixed use zoning and farther away from these rigid zones of only one type of use in each zone. When we both start looking at reducing traffic and getting people out and walking and biking and taking buses places, they need more of a mixed use zones in order to promote that type of healthy activity. So I think in the future, not only Livingston, but a lot of other cities in the valley, you'll see a move more toward a mixed use to get those folks out of their cars and to be able to have a grocery store down the street within walking distance and a clinic and the school all within walking distances.
Well, I can understand that happening in large cities. Be realistic about Livingston. I mean, how, how, how far do you have to walk, you know, to go to the roof of your house? I mean, it, it doesn't make any sense.
Well, and that's at a, 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 a school and now there would be the proposed medical center and the library nearby, all within walking distance, I do.
And these two gentlemen said that if you, you wanted to go talk to more neighbors before you made a decision on this, whether to approve or disapprove. If you want, I can give you the names of neighbors you can go talk to.
Oh, we got this. No, if he is, even if we approve it or not, if we approve it, we still have two more meetings to go. We still have a council meeting. And you have more neighbors, you know, they talk and be happy or they, they do not approve it, it will be set down. So we're not going through. But right now, we have to make the decision if it's going to go to council or not.
Well, I'm not real familiar with the way city planning commissions work. But I, I would think that if you approve it, that would carry some weight to the city council. No? Okay.
You would think that.
Let me ask this question. What is the purpose of approving or disapproving if the city council not to listen to it?
They're not approving or disapproving, they're making a recommendation.
All right, make a recommendation to approve or disapprove, the same thing. Okay, thank you very much.
So basically, I'll close the public hearing at 12. So basically, we're saying a recommendation to the city council. And they will hear our recommendation or not. And after the meeting, I can explain to you why you would flatten this guy. And if you're here or there. So we just need to recommend that being it's, it's midway. What do we feel? I am, I'm, 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 what do we?
It still has two meetings to go.
Has two more public hearings after city council, which is what I said. And then they come back, what else?
Yeah, then they give, yeah, council will give feedback. You know, the notice will go, we send again. And here's going to be our fight. I personally would tell them, yeah, city council meeting coming up. And we want you guys to be there to hear your voice and city council will go through that and make a decision.
And then again, just to clarify, we have the applicant for this, for, who would eventually apply for a CUP if it's approved. But really, what's in front of the commission right now is a recommendation to the council on whether this type of use should be conditionally permitted in these zones throughout the city, not specific to this particular applicant.
I want to go ahead and motion to a cruel revolution 2012 dash.
Oh nine.
Oh nine. And I'm not sure where we can put this to include the verdict on mental health. I guess it would be, how is that? Number 14 or whatever.
Correct, number 14.
So if we can put that as a, as another possible use. In terms of smart planning design, adding to this sort of new fuse, this sort of new trend, so that's where I'm coming from. So I am motion. I say that. And then we still have a first, we have a second, we have a roll call.
Commissioner Baines?
Yes.
Commissioner Castellanos?
Yes.
Commissioner Mendonza?
Yes.
Chair Flores?
Yes.
Motion carry four zero to approve.
And can I just say that, once we go to the city council, we're making this recommendation, and I will say that the city council does care, the public does take the public comments really seriously, outside of sort of me joking about it earlier, I think that the council does take this into consideration, so if the neighborhood does want to get together, I'm sure they'll have a look in here and really consider it. So I would recommend that, just in case, if, if that's a council meeting, if a lot of you have it, there's nobody beyond you, so, if you really want to express yourself.
And like I said, I'll personally close second to the neighbors now. Next city, what would be the next, who would this be brought from the gentleman?
It'll go to council at the beginning of April third.
Okay, moving speedily along to item, does the applicant want to, finally, okay, sorry, thank you for coming, item number five, murals. And I hope placing that on the agenda didn't build up too much interest, because we don't have a draft ordinance tonight, but what we, what we do have is the opportunity to have, have another discussion about it and, and logistics and that, but from the commissioners. This was an item, this is, this is a reminder, because it's been a while since the sign ordinance was their last, well, we did some revisions to the sign ordinance last summer, I believe it was, one of the items that we pulled out of the provisions was a mural permitting scheme that would allow the city to, to permit murals within the city. The, the reason why we pulled it out is because we weren't quite comfortable with the language that, believe it or not, mural regulations are a heavily litigated area within constitutional law, so this is something that has to be very carefully drafted, and, you know, the, the, the real tension is coming up with an ordinance that gives the city some sort of discretion, some sort of control over, over the types of murals that are permitted within the city, but not infringing on constitutional rights of speech and expression, and, and it's, as I said, it's a heavily litigated issue, and the constitutional law on the, on the issue has essentially come down to very little discretion to the city to regulate these types of activities. So a lot of cities have not permitted, they've, there's prohibition on, on murals, because, because of the limitations, if they, if, if murals are allowed, essentially, what the city can do in terms of its regulations is to take place where, where are known as time, place, and manner regulations, on the, on the application for the permit, or on the murals themselves. So you can, you can regulate things such as design characteristics, types of materials, sizes of murals, things that have to do with public safety, but which, as soon as, as soon as there's any control over the content of the mural, that's where you cross the line of constitutionality. So they have to be content, neutral, time, place, manner restrictions, legally, and, but still trying to, again, like I said, just balancing, still trying to give the city some discretion and some, some approval authority with it, while toeing that constitutional line is, is incredibly tricky. So we've done, we've done some research, and pulled up a lot of the case law on it, and one city that has had to litigate this heavily is Portland, Oregon, so I actually pulled there, because I know they've been up and down the courts on this issue, and I pulled their mural, what, what has survived of their sign ordinance, just to see what, because they've had that experience, what they, what they ended up with. And they do, they do have, like I said, pretty limited discretionary approval over what murals, over the content of the murals. These things, these things are, are, you know, it's really types of materials, design characteristics, things like that, but nothing that would regulate the content of the mural.
It's just like the line.
Right, that's, that's, sorry, I'm wrong. So there's, there's, the, the one area where there's a little more flexibility is if the city were, it just wanted to allow murals on, on, non, what's, what's called public forms, or, or even non-public forms, government-owned property, city-owned property, and, and, you know, so this wall is city-owned property, but it's in a public form, so you're still providing it into the time, place, and manner restrictions, but there's other city offices, or the hallway, city hall, or places like that, so the public forms, city would have the ability to exercise a lot more discretion over, over spaces like that, or to take it to the opposite extreme would be a permitting system within the city that essentially establishes criteria for permit approval, and, and chances are, I think, that most, most cities have given the permit approval authority to, to the planning director, or, or planning staff, because it's essentially administrative approval, it's not the kind of thing that the city has the ability to exercise discretion over. It's hardly using the right materials, is it limited to a certain size, things like, things like that, that the city can, can require, but not the, the content in the mural itself. So that's, that's where, you know, for, for murals that are going to be citywide, or on the sides of buildings, or, or things like that, that would be the type of permitting scheme. So I think what we needed at this point was just a little bit more clarification or direction as to what types of murals the commission would like to see allowed within that permitting scheme, and just some, some general guidelines that you'd like to see built into that permitting scheme, and then we can take that and craft it into the criteria, the design criteria. So, that could be our homework, for you, item two one is included in your language, and we talked about it a long time, happy that this piece was brought up at last, so if we can just do some homework in it next time? Or we could even, I mean, if you have, if you have a thought on that right now, we can, we're, like I said, we've, we've done, we've done a lot of research, the only reason why this has taken so long is because of the interim agreement, when we pulled the sign ordinance, and now we've had a lot of big planning projects, and, and I mean, the planning staff and the city, it's, it's had a lot of issues on, on the big planning projects, but we, we have managed to pull together the research, and, and I think we're, we're at the point where we're ready to start drafting this ordinance, and we just wanted a little bit more direction from the commission as to what kind of murals you'd like to see and see, or like, as to try a bit into the, the permit criteria. I guess I'm just concerned initially about the murals at, at the value market, if they're, I know, maybe two years ago, there was a conversation about, that sort of being as a code, a date code, there wasn't a code, so they're good, so as long for the immediate future, if they're sort of not being bought for having that there, or having it tear down, or throwing a bucket of white paint over it, rampage?
No, code enforcement stepped back on this to allow the process to work itself out, because in fact, the store has changed hands. The ordinance that came forward wanting the mural, no longer opens the business.
The mural is still there. The mural is still there. And that's one of the, the one of the cities, the other cities I've looked at, in Donna, and Central, and Central, LA's knew they're trying to, they're having the same struggle, and, and trying to shape this ordinance, and they took the position with pre-existing murals, that they, they classified them as, they put a part in their ordinance, and, and essentially allowed them to, to exist and remain, and it should better. There's always great mural, potentially based on Livingston, and it makes that store right across, it's a great wall for a mural. I remember growing up, there was a mural that said, watch Livingston grow, or watch this grow, I forgot what the name of that, that's no longer there, so I think this is sort of spice, so maybe, maybe I'm more of a, for example. So if we have any ideas, we can contact you, and, thank you, Michael, and I really appreciate that. Item number six for reports, my commissioner, Commissioner Baines, can I report?
Not need to report at this time.
Welcome back, Commissioner Castellanos?
Nothing to report at this time.
Nothing to discuss. I, just really quickly, I want to think the city are closing on the State River Parks on their city website, hopefully we can raise the necessary cost to control it to burn by it. Donna, and people, anything to refer?
I would just like to state that, Rancho San Miguel, Livingston, comments is still moving forward, in fact, they should have revised, revised elevations from them this Friday or Monday. If the changes are minimal, I will be able to approve them at staff level, and we can get moving. If they're substantial, we'll have to go back to site and design review. They still are hoping to maybe start construction in August.
Wow, what about Taco Bell?
Taco Bell is still moving forward quickly, too, they've had their plans reviewed by the building department and approved. They did submit some landscape in plans, which the plans are under review right now by Public Works, to ensure that they are on a city's approved treaty status, so that's being taken care of right now, and they are working with the city engineer as to their rating for those.
It'll be done for four or five days, so, when April 1st, and come back in May 15, so all of them need to be here, okay?
So you will be missing two planning commission meetings, April 10th and May 8th. Thank you for that estimation.
Do you have anything to report on that?
I just have one more thing, I was able to go to the, to UC Merced last night for Ralph Mader's discussion, and it was very well-intended, there were, I'd say, a couple hundred people there, a lot of students, and you just talk about being involved in the community and making a difference, talking to your friends, talking to your neighbors, and working for the goal.
Great.
I have nothing to report.
Oh, thank you, Michael. Uh, yeah, I do, and I feel like I've, I've been speaking, I feel like I've been speaking more, more than I normally do. And I usually don't have reports, and strangely enough, tonight I do. One of them, and you already, you already mentioned both of them, actually, so I'm following our Chair Flores's lead, but one is just kind of a reminder about the Hafield and Conwell State Parks, the State River Parks, and, and.
They're giving a donation of $60,000.
I was able to convince, convince our firm to make a small donation, unfortunately not $60,000, but, I, I thought that the presentation here a little while ago was, was very well done, and it seemed like everybody was, was very supportive of that cause, so we wanted to make a small donation, just to remind people that, to, 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 you know, join that effort, and, and there was, I, I had the opportunity to have a conversation, and I'm blanking on her name right now, the woman that made that presentation, she said, she's optimistic, she said there, there's, she considers an 80% chance that they're going to deal with it with the money in time, but that they're, they're a little bit behind where they want to be right now, so. And then the other thing is, is the following point in the meeting you said earlier also was, I also wanted to, to say very simply, and, and recognize the, the rush that she, she did last week in preparing this, and it's for the special meeting, not, not something, I mean, as I told the applicant, that's something that normally takes, takes weeks, and it was, it was a long meeting, and she got it done in three days, and did a fantastic job, and many, many changes that were made in my, so I just, yeah, I wanted to know, that would feel us under, so thank you. Remember, I know all these. Okay, but that will turn the meeting until next month at 8:30, thanks.